... which is a proposal to authorize a 2-mil carbon fee for SOPEC's retail electric customers in the city of Athens. SOPEC is the acronym for Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council. I'd like to thank the Athens Community Center for providing the space and Brian Sorkoff, the Athens City Government Channel for recording this event for us. And this video will be available on the YouTube channel of the Athens City Government. I'd also like to thank our local media. We have W O E TV back here. We have the Athens News and the Athens Messenger reporters here. So, the League of Women Voters is dedicated to educating voters and encouraging participation in the election process. We do this in Athens County, as well as state candidates in chief forms like we're doing tonight. We do it through Athens County. We print voter guides. We have our visiting panelists. And registering voters. The voter guide for this primary election is available on our website at athlonsleeve women voters dot org. It is also in print form if you want to go to the treasurer's office up town, it's in their window, right next to the board elections. And also in any of our county library branches. Our local candidates' issues and information is also available online at vote411.org. This is a software that's used by the state, national, and local leagues to put up their candidate information. So, to use vote411.org, you use your name and address as your registered vote, and then you're given access to your ballot, the people and the issues that will be on your ballot for your precinct. There's also a state and national League of Women Voters online guide at vote411.org to get that information as well. We have information cards back there on vote411. And we also have membership forms for the League of Women Voters. Should you be so thrilled by tonight's report that you must become a member or hoping you're going to be. So, I'm going to briefly introduce our panelists. Our moderator tonight is Athens League of Women Voters Member Sarah Paul Michaelou. She is the Executive Director of Upstate Ohio. And our panelists this evening are Steve Patterson, Steve Patterson, Mayor of Athens, Chris Byer, the City Council President, Eddie Smith, who is the Executive Director of the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council for SOPEC. And I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thanks, Sam. So, I'll share a little bit about what we'll be doing this evening. We're going to start with opening remarks from each of the panelists. Eddie's opening remark is going to be a little bit longer. He's going to give us a 10-minute explanation about issue three. Following the opening statements, we will take questions from the audience. We'll also solicit questions from our media. And we will also take questions to the general public. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and one of our members will be putting the microphone over to you. You ask that you keep your questions concise, and that everyone has a chance to ask questions. At the end of the evening, we'll give each panelist a time to bear a closing statement. I'd like to read the ballot language for issue three that Athens City voters will be reviewing on May 8th or sooner, if they vote early. It says, "Number three, advisory election, Athens City. Shall the city of Athens, through Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, SOPEC, opt out electric aggregation program, have the authority to charge 2 mils retail carbon fee for each kilowatt hour of electric consumption used by SOPEC retail electric customers in the city of Athens, and use all carbon fee revenues to fund local public solar projects? Such involvement to occur automatically, except for any SOPEC retail electric customers elect to opt out." That's a mouthful. So, with that issue read, I would like to turn the mic over to Eddie Smith, Executive Director of SOPEC, to introduce the ballot issue. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you, Sarah. My name is Eddie Smith, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, SOPEC. And boy, if that ballot language is pretty concise and clear already, right? No, it's a mouthful, and energy and environmental policy is a complicated subject matter. But I'm really glad to be here tonight representing SOPEC in a progressive city like Athens where we get to learn about and consider innovative policies and programs and ballot measures like the carbon fee that city voters are going to be voting on coming up this May. To give you a very brief introduction to this complicated program and policy idea, energy consumption is really valuable. It's what drives our whole economy. It's what allows us to have this meeting here tonight and do so much of what our economy does. But at the same time, when we consume energy that's produced in a certain way, it creates negative byproducts that have a damaging effect on our economy. And right now, the state of Ohio, like most states in the United States, creates a certain amount of economic damages from every megawatt hour of energy production from its grid. If we're going to solve that problem, we have to try to incentivize conservation, right? We have to take the cost of those negative impacts, those economic damages, and we have to capitalize them. We have to layer them into the price we pay for energy. That way, we have an appropriate incentive and an appropriate price signal to consume the right amount of energy, right? And to also make investments in things like solar panels, energy efficiency improvements, and behavior that's concerning energy. So, to give a little bit of an introduction to this issue, the base issue that Sarah read and that everyone's going to be voting on is this opt-out carbon fee. So, the opt-out carbon fee will charge every customer in the city of Athens that's enrolled in a SOPEC opt-out electric aggregation program a 2 mil per kilowatt hour fee. That may not mean a lot, but what that comes out to is about $1.60 to $1.80 per customer each month. And the purpose of that fee, again, is to incentivize conservation. Customers can completely offset that fee by reducing just 2% of their monthly consumption. You can avoid 2% of your monthly consumption in a lot of very easy ways. Just adjusting your thermostat a single degree towards the outside temperature will completely offset the carbon fee. But the second thing that's going to happen with this carbon fee, even if people do reduce their consumption, we're still going to end up lending funds, right? Because we're still going to charge 2 mils per kilowatt hour if it passes. And so, all those fees are going to get, there's going to be revenue from the fee that's going to be collected. And so, what's the next best policy move to use those fee revenues for? Well, the initiative in front of everyone tonight and on the ballot on May 8th is to use those revenues to fund a community solar program. Say, if we're going to be charging a fee for the economic damage from energy consumption and production, let's use those fees to also start solving the problem, right? To start creating more renewable, non-damaging sources of energy. So, you'll notice also the ballot language says that all revenues will be directed towards funding the build-out of solar projects on public buildings within the city of Athens. And so, that's the second part of this policy that everyone's learning about here tonight. First part charges the fee and incentivizes conservation, creating the appropriate price signal. But the second part, the fees that get collected will be used to build out solar panels on public buildings. Those solar panels are going to create energy savings for those public bodies, right? City government, schools, whomever those public entities might be, are going to be able to stretch their existing budgets farther due to the avoided utility costs. And that's going to be to the benefit of all the citizens and taxpayers. But those solar panels are also going to produce something else besides just energy. In the energy market, because we have these economic damages from energy production, some clever policy people invented this accounting unit called a REC, a Renewable Energy Credit, right? So, what's a REC? A REC is one of these accounting certificates or credits that's assigned to every unit of energy that a renewable asset, a renewable resource produces throughout time. So, if you have solar panels that produce a megawatt hour of electricity over a certain period of time, whenever they finish producing that megawatt hour of electricity, the government issues to the owner of those solar panels a REC, right? For not creating any carbon damages or pollution from the energy. And when it produces another megawatt hour of electricity, they get another REC issued to them. And so, throughout the year, all their production is allowing them to be issued recs. Well, those recs are valuable to lots of people in the energy economy, especially utility companies, that have to meet minimum standards of renewable sources. And so, people can purchase, companies can purchase those recs, which allow them to transfer the title of clean energy onto their own products. Well, here locally, SOPEC has a 100% renewable product for all the aggregation customers in the community. But we purchase our recs to call that a 100% renewable product. We purchase our recs from wind farms in Texas, right? And that's a great incremental step, but a lot of people aren't satisfied with that. We've gotten a lot of feedback from customers in the community who are saying, "How can we create a more solar-based rec, right? And a more local-based rec? And how can we keep these rec dollars closer to our local economy and keep them circulating here instead of taking them to Texas, right? We don't want $4 dollars out of Southeast Ohio." So, what's going to end up happening with this proposal is not only we're going to charge a carbon fee to incentivize conservation, and not only collect the carbon fee on every kilowatt hour of consumption, but, and use it to build out these solar panels, but also we're going to take all of the recs that are generated by the solar panels, build out in public buildings, and transfer all those recs back to the aggregation pool for all the customers in the community. And it's going to increase the portfolio of local solar recs that make up that renewable product. And that makes sense, because they're the customers who paid the carbon fee in the first place, right? And so, we now have this entire cycle, this entire economy here. Those who pay the fee in the first place are the ones entitled to getting the local solar-based renewable energy product in their aggregation program. So, in a nutshell, that's a quick summary of this policy proposal that everyone gets to vote on coming up on May 8th. A lot of fails, of course, but I hope that was a good introduction. And with that, I'm going to end my opening statement and turn it over to Mayor Patterson. Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. And thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this this evening. And thank you to all of you who are here to learn more about the carbon fee. And that term unto itself is important, because unfortunately, I think a lot of people were hearing different terms being thrown around when this first came out. This is not a tax. It is not a tax. You cannot opt out of your taxes. How great would that be? I guess it would be, but you cannot. But this, it is an opt-out program. You can opt out of this fee if you opt to opt out of the aggregation as it exists today. Let me just share a couple of things with you. I mean, Eddie really kind of encapsulated everything that has to do with this program. There are, I believe, 84 mercantile accounts in the city of Athens, and that is all of our electric accounts. That's all the buildings that we have that are metered, and some of them are rather big energy consumers. The wastewater treatment plant is a big one. The water treatment plant is a big one. I'm going to kind of stick with the water treatment plant for a moment and share something with you that some of you may or may not know, and that is that we are currently with the renovations of the water treatment plant. We have opted to include in that a 227-kilowatt solar array, which is substantial. But that's also an expensive solar array. It's about $370,000 that costs that we're incurring. But it's the responsible thing to do with something that's producing, utilizing that much energy, because that particular array is by and large behind the meter. What that means is that that's not 100% going back out onto the grid. A lot of that's being recaptured and put back into the water treatment plant and helping us offset our electric costs. The pay-down on that, though, is substantial. It could be, you know, seven to 14 years, depending on how much energy that it's actually producing, to where, you know, we are really starting to see significant, we'll see savings right away, but we still have to pay down on that $370,000. With this program, with the amount of money that this would generate, we would be looking at somewhere around possibly $80,000 to $90,000 annually that would be able to roll into solar projects on other municipal buildings. Some of the things we're kind of exploring at this point, Arts West. Arts West has a great south-facing roof line, or at least a portion of it. We could also be looking at the city garage, where the sixth floor of the city garage, we put some solar panels up there. But we're looking at a lot of different areas where we could be doing this. We could possibly put some on the roof of this building. How great would that be to have solar on the south side of our arced roof of the, you know, the community center and recapturing a lot of that? The beauty of this program, if this is successful, this initiative, is that rather than seeing seven to 14 years down the road of truly, you know, capturing that revenue and, or that, the electric capacity and feeding it back in, this would be almost instantaneous, because this money would be coming from this particular carbon fee. Something else, just to kind of put this in a level of perspective for all of us, this morning, when I was at my favorite coffee shop getting my cup of coffee, the amount I always know that I'm paying for that cup of coffee is right around $2.25. And I'm looking at this, and if my energy consumption at home is somewhere between, you know, 800 to 900 kilowatts, and I'm paying $1.60, my cup of coffee is costing more on a single day than this would cost per month in terms of what we would be paying for this. You know, for me, you know, back in January of 2017, I almost instantaneously signed on with a larger group across the nation, the climate mayors. And one of the things that was a challenge for being a climate mayor is, again, continuing to honor the Paris Climate Accord is number one, and number two with that is reducing your carbon emissions. Shortly after that, I was asked, "Well, how many, how much carbon emission is actually taking place in the city of Athens? There's not a whole lot of industry, you know, heavy industry taking place." But, you know, there really is. Our residential, our neighborhoods are generating a lot of carbon, just not generating carbon, but with the utilization of our, the electric that we're so used to, that that's where that's coming from. It's coming at the power providers, the energy production that's taking place. And so, you know, this would be one more step in moving forward of honoring the Paris Climate Accord and me being a climate mayor, where this is the right step moving forward to where we are doing something that is helping to reduce our impact on the environment and the generations to come. I look at my own six-year, half-year-old daughters, and I go, "I've got to leave the city of Athens and our world in a better shape, or in a better position than it was when I took it on, when I was born in 1960, when things really looked bleak in terms of our environment." So, that said, hopefully on May 8th, that you will think long and hard before that. Hopefully, you'll, everyone who's here today, we've got a stack of these sitting over there. There's a lot of very, very valuable information that's inside here, and it really, really helps put things into perspective when you look at all the info that is in here. Here, I'm showing you the middle page. And here's the, here's the front of it. There's a stack of them there. Hopefully, you'll grab one and educate yourself more on what this particular carbon fee will do for our environment and for ourselves as human beings. Thank you.
Good evening. Glad that you're here tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. If you're like me, the first few times I heard mention of this carbon fee, I can scratch my head and say to Eddie, "Could you explain that one more time or draw me a picture?" Because it's not, it can seem to be complicated. For me, what I, in my head, envision is that it's a local solar development fund to put solar on public buildings in our city. And that's basically what it does. What I would like to do is give a little bit of information on the tradition of our Athens community and mention a few of the things that we have done towards energy conservation. Back in 2006, and Lorraine McCoster reminded us of this when she was at a city event for this carbon fee. She said that Mayor Abel and then Councilmember Paul Wild signed a Cool Cities Agreement. And so, there's been a long tradition of our interest in how can we make our community more energy efficient? Then around 2014, about the time that SOPEC was formed, the city created an electric aggregation program. That's an opt-out program if people wanted to be. In 2016, our Southeast Ohio, SOPEC became part of a Northeast Ohio, bigger consortium of people. So, there are many organizations in the state working on this issue. So, we're part of, SOPEC is actually part of the Northeast Ohio Group, NOPE. And then in 2017, the city adopted a gas aggregation program. And then in 2017, there was another event that I think is very significant, and Paul Logan and others presented to City Council the 2017 City Environmental and Sustainability Commission Report. And in that, they identified priorities for the community, including solar development, electric aggregation, and incentives for renewable energy use. Then in 2018 was when City Council began the work on this carbon fee and passed an ordinance to put this on the ballot so that citizens could vote on this and see if they wanted to adopt it, once again, as the opt-out program. And so, we would be, I believe, one of the, the first community in the state, I think, to do this program?
And the first in the United States to do it through aggregation.
Okay, so the first in the United States. So, that's, you know, quite impressive. And I think it continues in our long tradition of wanting to improve what we can for the environment at our community in Athens and beyond, in the Athens community at large. And I would, one other thing that we just learned a few minutes ago too, on the ballot, is this issue. And Democrats and Republicans can vote on just that, just the issues. So, that's an important thing to remember, to be able to tell people too, that if they're not inclined to come out to vote for candidates, this is a very important issue, and the city is really committed to it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming on for your introductions. We will begin with questions from the audience. Linda will come around, and then I'll send you down.
I have several questions, but so I'll just pass one down.
I think your mic's off, or...
Or up, you may have to put it really close.
Eddie mentioned that a plug would be used to place a solar panel on public buildings. You even included the word as school, so that's my question. Is this money just for city government buildings, which would be all those 84 accounts in the city? Or does it also cover public school buildings? And any other public buildings that would be located within the city of Athens, the county council?
That's a great question, Jo. So, the existing legislation, the ordinance, and the ballot language that Sarah read off in the beginning, states that the revenues will be used for a build-out of solar systems on public buildings, right? It doesn't go any more specific than that, and that's the question you're asking, so...
I'm asking to answer that question because I said, who would be, I mean, the municipal buildings, but maybe about more than that, and we still didn't decide that.
Right. And so, your question is going to remain an open question until after May 8th. It won't have an answer. And that's going to be a value judgment for the citizens of Athens to help SOPEC and Athens City Government make a decision on it, because following May 8th, if voters believe in the spirit of what this is trying to achieve, then, and only then, we'll go down a rule-making process, right? We'll establish local administrative rules that actually states that in the existing legislation, should this pass, we have to have two public hearings, and we'll use input from those hearings to form a procedural plan of operations for this program. And that can include specifics on, we want to see them on these buildings, or a certain ratio of different types of buildings. So, all of that can, the specific details like that are not anything we can include in a ballot measure this broad, but yeah, there will be some administrative tightening or specifications for all of that, and that's a process for all the citizens to help on after May 8th. But it's going to be an open question until then.
So, the savings could be for the city of Athens, or it could be for organization, or it could be for the county that says that there are public buildings in city councils, right?
The current legislation and ballot measure have the potential to have savings for all those entities, plus the township, plus the board D D, plus, you know, any other taxing authority or district that has public buildings within the city of Athens. But the potential right now is broad, and then we can set it as specific as people want to after May 8th.
Do we do public hearings, how do they determine, how do we establish that's true?
I think that's fair. I think that the hearing process should include, because everyone's got different priorities, right? So, yeah. But I don't, I want to share the mic here, so do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay, never mind. I wasn't forcing the mic.
Other than, I think the public hearing route is the right way to go, to where everyone has a voice during that process, to have two rounds of public hearings to... And, and Joanie, I, I think your question's a great question, because this is pretty broad, but this, I think the public hearing is going to allow us to vet and figure out, okay, what is the priority list for the citizens of Athens who have voted on this particular ballot issue?
Well, I guess, now, there's an important issue that the guy said, I too, in the legislation that drew, it was discussed that there were two municipal buildings. I'm glad I said general, and I don't know the general, but I guess I've best interpreted how it passed, and how it... I can check the original language of our ordinance, and I will do that, but meanwhile, what I'll do, we can come back to that. I would, and I would make the point that I think the public process and leaving it open so that communities, so public buildings could potentially benefit from this. We all are part of this community, so all those public buildings, I think, should be included. And we, we get great ideas at public hearings, so I really enjoy that process and think it's very, a very smart one for us to follow. I will, I have the ballot, the original ordinance language, and I'll check as we go on with our discussion.
Nice question. From the... Do individuals who have solar batteries on their phones, do those credits automatically go to the A D P? I mean, if I'm in the grid, or are those available for, for the, are they created by SOPEC?
I'm assuming that. S recs?
Yeah. So, private residential and commercial recs that are generated on a solar panel that's on a residential or commercial building owned privately, those recs belong to the owner of the panels, and they're, unless they have a different arrangement in their financing or something, they've signed off their rights to those. But if that hasn't happened, those recs belong to the panel owner, and they actually have an indefinite shelf life up until you transform them. And then after you transfer them, they have a five-year shelf life to be used by a utility company or a retail energy company or something like that. But unfortunately, this ballot measure and this language would not allow for the purchase of private sector recs within the city of Athens to satisfy this local S rec, local renewable solar product for all the customers in Athens. That's something we could explore in the future. I think if everyone agrees with this concept, if voters agree with the spirit of this, then we can always try and explore a way where we can do something like that in the future. But unfortunately, we can't purchase private sector recs yet to satisfy them. But unfortunately, we can't purchase private sector RECs yet to satisfy them.
Joni?
SOPEC's more than happy to receive donation, donated local RECs to make a more local renewable product.
And Joni, the language in section two of the ordinance, 1418, that was passed by the city, refers to public, public solar projects. So it's, yeah, it's broader.
We are here tonight to discuss this, but I would like to know from a source, so I can get information about the larger organization, you know, that-- I've got something to nail about, I'm a big ask, I know I'm a big-- and there's to me, and there's no public hearings or information, it's probably appropriate to all, so I'll talk about that. So can you tell me what--
Sure. You could go, you can go to nopec.org and online. I'm on the board for NOPEC. And so I could also get you any literature that you would like to better inform you on NOPEC. It's interesting, just to share with everyone in the room, I mean, NOPEC has been around for, for a long time. NOPEC currently has more than 220 municipalities in Northern Ohio. And when we partnered with SOPEC, SOPEC kind of really kind of modeled itself after NOPEC and used a lot of NOPEC's resources. We learned a lot from NOPEC when they, as an electric aggregation organization. So SOPEC and really, I have to credit Eddie, as well as Roger Wilkins, did a lot of work on trying to figure out how we create electric aggregation via SOPEC here in Southeastern Ohio. But with that said, Southeastern Ohio, I serve as the Southeastern Ohio representative for NOPEC, which is a big title, I know. But it's interesting, when I sit on the board, the other board members, they represent individual counties up in, that are NOPEC members. We're the only kind of outpost, if you will, servicing Southeastern, representing Southeastern Ohio at NOPEC. But I can get you as much literature as you would like to read on NOPEC, so you're better informed on them. But SOPEC is the same, really, by and large. Just much smaller. Yeah. You're welcome.
Is there enough, a minimum area that's exposed that that panel area, Lord Bruce paper itself, there to be offered, some of those, some of these aren't historical, and we can't use panel software? Is that a take into account?
It has. I mean, just to share with you, even though the roof line isn't optimal on the, on the city building, one of the things we determined is that the city building, because the city building's ridge line runs north-south. And we don't believe, George Ivelson has gotten up there, and we don't think that that would structurally be able to support a large solar array. It could support a smaller one possibly, but we are taking that into account with their historic buildings. Because the other thing is, is that we've looked at the armory. But with the armory, do we want to detract from the historic image of the armory by having solar arrays up there? And again, this is my own personal opinion, I would contend, no. But we are looking at some others. I mentioned Arts West, and I had mentioned, you know, this particular building, which could easily support solar arrays on this facility. But it is something that we certainly are taking into account. There is also the opportunity in some more open spaces in the city of Athens to where there are freestanding solar arrays. That's what's going in down at the water treatment plant. It's a freestanding, a ground-mount solar array as opposed to a roof solar array.
Do you have--
Pardon me?
Do you have a minimum area necessary to make this?
We do.
How's the $300,000 feature term bid this out? And I asked because a friend went on the west side, has ten or twelve panels on your house, and costs six thousand. I mean, I'm looking for bids.
Sorry, can you repeat the beginning of the question one more time? $300,000. $300,000.
Yes, that's--
Oh, sorry, I thought you were just talking. Sorry.
Sure. I mean, we've looked at, initially, we were looking at the possibility of having a 278 kilowatt array, which, as I mentioned, this one, the one that we're going to put, install, that's currently being installed, is 227 kilowatt array. And part of it changing from 278 down to 227 was cost. It was like, our return on investment would take longer than we care to pay down on that by going in that direction. But again, we did want to do something to where we were hoping to offset the energy cost at our second-largest energy consumer for a municipal building, which is the water treatment plant. Yeah, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment, they're huge. They're running 24/7. And there's a lot of pumps and a lot of mechs inside those buildings that are electric, you know, running on electricity. So where we landed on that, I don't know, Beverly, if I can give you an actual answer as to why we landed at that number, but it was something that we penciled out for the city, to where we knew that that was a cost-effective venture, knowing what we would recapture and draw down on our energy consumption over the course of the lifespan of that solar array. Which most solar arrays these days, just as a side note to all of this, you know, are 25 years plus in some cases, as technology keeps evolving, lifespan of these solar panels, one, they get lighter, and two, they last longer. But that's something that we had to take, keep in mind too, is to, do we do this with the lifespan? And the answer was yes. But I can get you more detail if you want, from our city engineer, who was in on those early meetings, as to where we landed on the, that particular price point for those panels. But again, a lot of it was, was cost-driven.
You can put it all on the website?
Sure. That's a good point. Yeah. Thank you, Beverly.
I'd like to get a few questions. Samantha, the Athens messenger, would you like to ask your question?
First, real quick question. Did you say, is that water or wastewater?
Water. Water.
I didn't want to-- Second thing, I'm a little confused about the REC credit thing. So I know you explained it, and I don't want to ask you to explain the whole thing again. Like, is the credit like a, like, how do you use it? Like, what, money back from it or--
Yeah, that's a great question. And these RECs aren't very intuitive, so it takes a little bit of time to rack around them. But if we rewind back to 2008, under Ted Strickland's governorship of Ohio, a Senate Bill 230 was passed, which established Ohio's renewable portfolio standards. And the renewable portfolio standards create a minimum threshold that utility companies and other load-serving entities, like retail energy suppliers, a minimum threshold that they have to supply through renewable energy sources each year out of their total portfolio. And so each year, that minimum percentage ratchets up. And it keeps ramping up and up until it hits its maximum 12 and a half percent. And there's a certain year that it gets that, that's all written in law, in state law. Well, each year that that ratchets up, the utility companies have to purchase more RECs to legally title their energy that may come from coal plants or natural gas, or whatever, but to legally put the sticker on it and call it renewable, they have to buy the sticker from someone else. And that creates a cash flow back to that actual renewable project, which pays for the cost of the water first of all, right? So local panel owners down here in Southeast Ohio, you can get $250 a piece for their RECs. And they might produce six of them a year, or eight of them a year. So that's, you know, for a 25-year warranty system, 2,000 bucks a year for 25 years is a serious way to recover the cost of your system. The REC market today isn't quite as strong. RECs have gone down a lot in value. Programs like this can bring revenue back. So if that helps a little bit in understanding the purpose of RECs and how you get money for them, if they get purchased by load-serving entities and total companies. Okay, great.
So is that a question? You mentioned that installation of the solar panels, obviously needed. And as she said, I've got a management position. So like, how do you, with that, like, to get the panels solved?
Sure. What I meant by that was with the solar array that's being built down at the water treatment plant, that, that we have to pay down, you know, for that particular system. Whereas with something like this, you know, with these, with a carbon fee, if the carbon fee revenue comes in, and let's say we decide, okay, we're going to put a 60-kilowatt array on Arts West, you know, or maybe we wait two years and build that up, to where we have enough money that has come in through the carbon fee to build instead 120-kilowatt solar array on Arts West. As soon as that solar array is built, because it's being built from using the carbon fee funds, it's not coming out of the city coffers. But the great thing is, is once that's online and it's operational, the city's going to start seeing relief from our electric bill immediately, which in turn allows us to redistribute our budgeted funds that we have for Arts West, or for the parking garage, or for the Athens Community Center. You know, whatever the facility is that has that array on it, that we have to pay our AEP electric bill, to where now, we're not having to pay as much. And if we, you know, if you think about it, if we could cut that in half, if we could cut that down by a quarter, but let's go with that. If we could cut that by half, and because we're behind the meter with our own solar arrays that have come from utilizing the revenue generated by this fee, we can now take that revenue that we would normally budget towards our electric bill alone, and start using those for things such as other amenities here in the community center, or, you know, completely remodeling Arts West. You know, we, it allows the city to start thinking about what we can do with that otherwise budgeted electric bill and utilizing that money in other ways, in which I think is a very prudent responsibility, a responsible way to do those things. I don't, I'm not going to, I'm sitting here going, I could go down a whole different path if you want me to, with monies that we have lost over time, that we would normally have sent to the city of Athens, such as the local government fund. Something like this allows us on our own to kind of get back ahead, to where we're more efficiently and effectively utilizing your taxpayer dollars on municipal buildings as we move forward. Cheers, Samantha.
Okay. Can you use, yeah. Can you use the money from the carbon fee to probably pay off that solar array that's already up? Or the 370,000?
I don't know that we can. I don't think we can. But I will say this, because I've been thinking about that, is if we're going to put, we are, we're going to put a 227-kilowatt solar array at the water treatment plant. We could potentially enhance that solar array. That solar array, by the way, is going to cover about 40% of our energy consumption down at the water treatment plant. And so if we decided, let's wait a couple of years, build this up, have the ability to put a second freestanding solar array on, down at the water treatment plant, let's say, so 120-kilowatt solar array, the energy savings from that for our electric bill could certainly help us speed down the paydown on the 227-kilowatt solar array. Does that make sense? Because that would be a good cost-effective strategy to use. But I think that, you know, as was mentioned, since this is for public buildings in the city of Athens, that could be the schools, it could be the, it could be Beacon, it could be the, you know, county buildings, so it's public buildings. You know, I think wherever we rack and stack through the public hearing, that we decide, where is this going to go? So I'm not going to say that, yes, we're going to go and put another second array down there at the water treatment plant. But strategically, if you think about it, that would work.
Yeah.
Do you think you have low-income residents who are receiving assistance in aid, repeating, and other things that are through their income bills? Are those assistance programs, or can you cover this fee, or is this going to be a competing with those?
Great question. And these types of policy questions, we have to think about equity and how we treat everyone in the community. So under Ohio law, governmental aggregation programs, opt-out aggregation programs like SOPECs, are not allowed to enroll certain types of customers. One of the types of customers we are not allowed to enroll are customers who are enrolled under the Ohio Development Services Agency, DSA's, program called the Percentage of Income Payment Plus Program, PIP, P-I-P, Percentage of Income Payment Plus. Customers enrolled in that program are low-income customers who can't afford their utility bills each month, and are able to pay either 10% of their monthly income, or 10 dollars each month, whichever is greater. Those customers will not be affected by this, because this is only being charged to customers who can be enrolled in our program. But that actually brings up a great other topic, another type of customer that we cannot enroll are solar customers. If you have a grid-tied solar system, and therefore have a net metering account, we also cannot, we can't pull you into our existing aggregation program, which means this fee won't be levied against you. That creates some interesting incentives for customers who already have solar, and others who are thinking about solar, right? That can change the payback point on solar, if you're avoiding not only base energy costs, but also the fee, which is incentivized to reduce usage out of your conservation or solar. Oh, I'm sorry. I can talk slower, I'm sorry. Is that clear, though? Yeah? Okay.
Okay. Let's clear that on the rack here, from a question, but probably to another point. If we, once we have solar arrays up that are being funded by this initiative, this carbon fee, SOPEC will be buying the RECs from the solar that's set up in the city of Athens on public buildings? Correct? And those people in the aggregate will be paying twice. First, they're paying to have them set up, and then they're paying to buy them. Do I have that correct?
No.
Thank you.
There will not be a double payment. So to make things a little bit more complex, but I think everyone can continue grasping, you know, how this is all connected together, SOPEC does not actually purchase the energy that serves all the customers in our aggregation program, right? There are these companies called retail energy suppliers, which are intermediary companies, just like retail stores, like JCPenney. They don't actually make the products that we sell, but they're a convenient place for customers or aggregation programs to shop for the energy that they need, right, that they're looking for. And so these retail energy suppliers also are the ones who purchase RECs, the renewable energy credits. So what would happen in this case is SOPEC would ask our retail energy supplier to layer the carbon fee into everyone's, into everyone's rates. So when everyone pays their electrical rate, they're also paying the fee. The retail supplier is forwarded or passed through everyone's, everyone's dollars on their utility bills that include the fee and the payment for generation. And then the retail supplier forwards to SOPEC, or passes through to SOPEC, that fee, which will get put in a restricted fund for building out the solar. But separate from that, to answer your question, the retail supplier will also take legal possession of the RECs that are produced by any of these systems that get built into the future. And they'll take legal possession of those for free, since they've already been paid for through the carbon fee. And then they'll take those and assign them back into the energy that's being purchased and given to everyone through the aggregation program. So you get to this point here without having to pay for it twice. So you get to this point here without having to pay for it twice. Right. I don't know, I may have made that more complicated, I'm sorry. So, I'll say it this way, the sale of the REX from these systems to these customers who paid the fee, the sale will be for free. The REX will be sold for free, and transferred to everyone for free, since you already paid for it here.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, alright.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, who is building the actual solar panels that are mounted? Like, who's the buyer of those? Or are we, are we buying the mounted, you know what I mean? What am I asking?
So you're talking about the funds that are collected that get used for future build-outs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that also ties into this question of like, which buildings? That's not specified right now, right? And that's going to be an open question until after Election Day, and we should set a procurement, some rules for procurement, right? And how do we have a fair RFP process for sourcing panels? Do we want them to come locally? Those types of questions should be answered in the hearings, right?
Hi, just curious how 0.2 cents per kilowatt hour rate is landing on?
That's a great question, and this is my favorite topic to discuss, which is the economics of energy and the environment, but, so we actually need to figure out, discover two different numbers to get, to answer Alex's question on, where did we get this 0.2 cents per kilowatt hour from? The first question is, how much carbon gets emitted into the atmosphere when we keep these lights on and we consume energy in Ohio? And where we turn to for that information is the United States Energy Information Administration. It's an office under the United States Department of Energy. And the United States Energy Information Administration publishes statewide profiles for every state in the United States, which includes numbers on a term called their baseload and non-baseload emissions factors. So, what that means is, it looks at all the power plants that make up the whole generation fleet for the whole state, and how often they run. The ones that run all the time are called baseload plants, right? So they run 8,760 hours a year, every hour of the whole year. They have other plants that don't run all year, right? What you need to do is take how much carbon they emit per megawatt hour of energy they produce, multiply that times the number of hours they're in production, add that up for every plant in the state of Ohio, and then divide it by the number of plants, so you get the average emissions, a weighted average emission for baseload and non-baseload plants in the state of Ohio. That number is 1,510 pounds of carbon emissions for every megawatt hour of energy produced in the state of Ohio. That's the average for the whole state. So, that's the first number. How much of this damaging stuff do we put out? The second number is, how damaging is it? How would we value the damages? And that's a question that you have to answer with the science of economics, right? So, some economists who were hired by the United States Environmental Protection Agency investigated that question, and looked at all the different types of impacts, negative impacts that happened to the economy from the impact of carbon emissions. These are things like creating droughts, creating food insecurity. If you think about how much defense spending is already going towards dry, arid climates, strain their resources even more, and think about how much more defense spending for the United States, or foreign aid will have to be spent there. Those are all economic costs that we pay for, and we will pay for in the future, for every time we're emitting carbon, right? So, some very conservative economists came up with the best estimate for this, and their answer was that every megawatt hour of, or not every megawatt hour, every ton of carbon emissions in the atmosphere causes $36 in economic damages, 36 bucks for every ton. So now we have to take the two numbers we have. The first number, how much gets emitted, 1,510 pounds, which is slightly over three-quarters of a ton, and the second number, the negative value of those damages, $36 per ton, and we multiply them together. So three-fourths of a ton, times $36, equals three-fourths times $36, which is $27 per megawatt hour, or 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour. So a full carbon fee that actually counts for all of these damages, and Ohio's baseload non-baseload emissions factor, would be 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour. What's being proposed is not even a tenth of that. What's being proposed is 0.2 cents per kilowatt hour. So we believe it's very incremental here, and very flexible, because anyone can opt out who doesn't want to pay it, but that's how we arrived at it. We wanted to come at a number that was far beneath the actual 2.7 cents, and 0.2 is easy, because it's $2 on the megawatt hour. But that's, for everyone who did not want to know anything about economics of energy and the environment, there's, there's your fill for the year.
I'm so glad he's sitting up here.
But, but I think that does help put it in perspective for me, and when I heard that number the other day, if we were paying for what the damages that were being caused by the energy consumed, we would be paying 2.27 cents per kilowatt, and we're only proposing 0.2. That's a bargain.
You know, and again, this handout has that information in there, it can help you digest that, but again, to follow on what Chris was just saying, and we've been talking about this, that under the two mills, it would come out to about $1.60 to $1.80 a month. If it were full carbon fee, that would be $21 to $24 a month. There's a vast difference in what a full carbon fee would look like on our utility bill, but this is not that.
I assume that, that millage was based on a proportion of the Athens residents who have signed up for aggregation. What is that proportion of? How many of us have signed up to aggregation?
There is 4,200 residential and small business accounts in the city of Athens that belong to the SOPEC aggregation program. I think we actually have about 70 to 80% participation rate. It varies throughout the year, because we do have a somewhat transient population here with movers, students, and other people who move in and out of the community, but it's pretty close to about 70 to 80%. And, this isn't related to your question, not really, but one other number I wanted to throw out, SOPEC analyzed the city of Athens, not the governor, but the whole community's energy consumption during 2017, and if you actually put a dollar figure on all the carbon that got emitted that was tied to the energy consumed here in 2017, there's over a million bucks in economic damages, right? So, if that, if the 0.2 cents or the two mills isn't hitting home, we created over a million dollars in negative impacts to society last year in the way we consumed energy.
So, why, why is I a part of the aggregation? Part of me is very supportive of everything that we're presenting, but part of me still, it doesn't feel quite right. Maybe, part of the reason, maybe, is, I'm very supportive of the legal women voters, but this doesn't seem like the usual kind of legal women voters forum. It seems more like an, more like an infomercial.
Okay, well, we originally wanted to do a pro-cod forum. It was really hard to get somebody to composition. The person, the only person who was sort of willing, indeed wasn't really thrilled with being on the position, looking like he was against solar. And so, we looked at the idea of simply doing a town hall, which is what this is. This is not an issue for an exogenous town hall. We have a criteria for a town hall, is to have elected officials talking about the issue, and so we do have that. We do however, have some questions from Steve Pearson, who I asked her to do the composition. And so, Sarah's going to ask some of those questions, and which will be somewhat more, more of a composition.
And also to make it really clear, working for SOPEC, SOPEC's a public agency, and I'm legally prohibited from telling anyone how to vote on this, or advocating for everything I say as being objective, fact-based, and that can include facts about the benefits, right, which economics of science can calculate, but I can't tell you or anyone else how to vote, so I hope it doesn't come off like an infomercial.
So, let me ask you, maybe I wanted to move on. My memory might not be remembering this by myself, but when the aggregation, the electric aggregation first began, maybe this is just too difficult to do right now, but I seem to have this memory that one of the main purposes of it, that, maybe they did this back then, these REX, or is it REX, or, maybe they talked about it back then, I don't remember hearing anything about those back then. I thought that one of the main goals was to actually, to actually get electricity from renewable sources that, that we would use in our homes. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, that's a really big question, and when SOPEC was adopted, and when the city of Athens and the county of Athens signed on to SOPEC, there was a procedural document with all of SOPEC's administrative rules that was, that had to be approved, and it's called the Plan of Operations and Governance. And if you visit SOPEC's website, if you go to sopecinfo.org, and it's on all the literature here tonight, so if you haven't got one of these, again, please do, but if you go to that website and click on About SOPEC, and scroll to the bottom, you have a copy of our Plan of Operations and Governance, it's right there. There are 12 goals for the program that were adopted, that were adopted through law, and Goals 2, 3, 9, and 11 are all advanced by everything here tonight in this policy, right? So, these are kind of goals that we haven't been doing a lot about, and there are also goals that are compatible with the City of Athens Sustainability Plan and the Energy Action Plan within it. So it's, there's 12 goals, the goals are broad, so to answer your question...
If I can just say, add to one more, I'm sorry. But, okay, so one thing that, that I make it feeling not quite, that something I'm quite right, that I'm feeling this, is that, okay, so if that was one of the goals at the beginning, maybe, or maybe it was a little long range, long term goal, but this seems like sort of an artificial way to do it. Well, you know, what, what I, what I just said, what I thought at the beginning is, we would, we would all aggregate our purchase of electricity, and one of the things promised, well, not promised, but that they would try, maybe, that would maybe lower your electricity bill, maybe, but it would also try to purchase electricity from the local sources, and that might make it more expensive, so maybe you wouldn't exactly save money, but you would at least get the local electricity. Okay, so, this seems like an artificial way, it like raises your credit, like artificially, because as you said about, and I've written it down, about more than 10, at least 10 times, I think, but close to 10 times, we don't have the right incentive. It's like, it's like evil arrogant and judgmental, you don't have the right attitude, you don't care enough about conserving energy, so we have to, like artificially make you pay more, so we will be incentivized.
That's a great question, and in public policy studies, that's what's called a Pigouvian tax. It's where we all create some negative impact on society, that there's no market to capture and to force us to pay for, and unfortunately, we have to do these things that don't feel natural, right? We have to create these artificial incentives that incentivize things like reducing that negative impact, reducing pollution, reducing consumption of things that cause that. So, when you can't regulate something easily, when you can't monitor it, when you can't do those things, and when you also can't create a market for it, then your only other options are things like putting an artificial fee or something in there to try and create the right incentive. So, yeah, I, I can see, I guess, some of the spirit of what you're saying, but to the extent that we agree, or that this community agrees that creating a million dollars in negative harmful impacts to society each year in energy consumption is a bad thing, then having an incentive to correct that's probably a good thing.
One more, and so, the only way not, if you choose not to pay, that you don't want to pay, or you can't afford to pay, the tax or the, the only way to avoid that is to get out of the aggregation?
Yeah, that's not true. The first way, and the most preferred way to avoid it, is to conserve energy, right? That's the real goal here, right? So...
So you, so you might want to repeat his question?
Yeah, could you say your question again, so I get it right?
If you, if you, I'm about to retire, I'm very, very modest, very modest, okay, so if I figure out it's becoming too expensive, I can't afford to pay it, or choose that I don't want to pay the extra fee, the only, I'm part of the aggregation, I thought it was great, but the only way not to pay it is to remove my wife and myself from the aggregation, is that right?
If you would like to keep consuming the exact same amount of energy each month, you're right, the only way to not pay it is to opt out. You got it right.
If I could add to that, because this is, this is a fascinating conversation, and again, now I'm going to sound like an infomercial. This is invaluable in terms of the information, and, but one of the things that really resonated with me, and to your question and your concern, is one of the items on here, to where just changing your thermostat one degree during the winter, you know, turning it, I know, it's funny, but if I turn it down one degree in the winter, and then I, for my air conditioning, I turn it up one degree during the summer, that pretty much offsets this, this, you know, two mills, in terms of cost on my half, and so I'm going, well, personally, that makes sense to me, that I'm eliminating that cost without leaving the aggregation just by behaviorally making some changes myself. No, I understand.
And so that's another great point, too, if you already, I've spoken to several people who say, well, I already use such little energy. And actually, when we look at the data for the city of Athens' energy consumption, we actually do have people on the low end of the spectrum, on the bell curve, who are consuming 300 kilowatt hours a month, 400 kilowatt hours a month. They've done, they've had incredible energy efficiency investments, they've, they've really done a lot to minimize their consumption. And so for those customers, you're really only talking about 60 cents a month, you know, or 80 cents a month, than what this fee is going to cost. So, if you're someone who already consumes very little energy and you wear winter coats, you're not facing much of a fee. And you wouldn't be facing much of one anyway, because it's less than a cup of coffee, as has been said many times. has been said many times.
Question, to follow on that, assuming that the fee passes, how will citizens be notified that they're right to opt out of aggregation? Will this be clearly stated somewhere before they just kind of automatically start paying the fee? And then secondly, if I didn't even know you get a gas aggregation in the city, where is that going to be addressed?
Well, let's keep the gas aggregation to another forum.
No, they say the information has to be very, very clear, eliciting has to be very clear.
All right, well, let's stick to the question about how are we going to make it really clear for the carbon fee, right? So under Ohio law, every aggregation program has to, that automatically enrolls customers or changes price to customers who are already enrolled, has to send out a letter to all those customers letting them know of the price for that program, how long that price is going to be good for, all those sorts of things, how much of it's renewable energy. So every community member enrolled in the program will be receiving a letter from Sopac and our retail supplier explaining the fee. If we have to change the price because of the fee, we will send that letter to everyone to let them know that, hey, you're about to be enrolled. And if you don't want to enroll, you have 21 days to opt out, and you don't participate, and that's fine. And if you want to try it out, you can try it out also, and you'll be enrolled after the 21-day period. And then after that, if you want to leave, you can also opt out at any time. There's no fees or hassle or cost to do that, so it's pretty flexible. Got Luke back here?
Yeah, I'll just real quick try to say, this discussion has elicited many of the questions that were submitted previously, so I don't know that I'm going to, you know, read from here unless, you know, there's a need for it. I think we should take two more. Are we going to eight o'clock? Is that correct? Okay, seven forty-five, so I would say two more questions, and then we'll go to closing statements. Thanks.
Thank you, all these figures. One thing I haven't heard stated, and I'd love to hear the numbers, I'm sure you guys put the figures on this, that the projected savings, benefits, you've got these installations happening here, I figure, bundled together into the big installation that are coming here, 25,000 first ones, you have some other warranty, we know that those savings can be realized, and then do we know how many jobs can be created as we go along with this new activity as well?
Yes, so we actually modeled, if anyone wants to get one of these sheets, we, this resource really did take a while to prepare and a lot of time and thought went into, so yeah, I think everyone would be best informed if you have these, yeah, proves, but, yeah, so I'll just read a little bit of this to answer your question, Luke. So each of these annual 60-kilowatt installations would, would offset 90,000 kilowatt hours of energy each year and save $10,000 per year throughout the service life of the solar system. If we extend that in perpetuity for a 10-year period, we're getting $100,000 in savings over the course of, oh, and it also ratchets up, though, as we still add on one more system. So I believe our original modeling showed like $2.5 million in savings for the city over the warranty lifespan of the systems, while also eliminating a million dollars, or some portion of that million dollars in carbon emissions each year.
Very many final questions for Eddie?
Just for, just for, is there some, could, can you just read, can you just read the questions?
Yeah, I'm happy to. He, question one was, if the fee is based upon damage to the environment by using carbon based methods of energy production, why are city Sopac residents being asked to pay a carbon fee when their electricity is 100 percent wind-generated? Do you want to take that one, question?
Thirty-second answer. We do have those recs purchased from wind farms in Texas. It doesn't change where the electrons flow from in order to keep these lights lit. The lights are lit by power plants in the state of Ohio, which, as we said, has an emissions factor statewide of 1,510 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour production. Therefore, the appropriate, or the actual damages we're creating are based on that figure independent of any recs we buy or don't buy.
The second question is, there are many taxes in place that are not paid by everyone. Renters don't pay property tax, bicycle riders don't pay gasoline tax, those with no income don't pay income tax, those who don't purchase goods or commodities don't pay sand tax, but all of those are called taxes. So why call the two mils a fee and not a tax?
I think it's already been said, you can't opt out of your gasoline, property, or income taxes at the pump or at your, with the treasurer's office, but you can opt out of fees where there's flexibility in those programs, you can opt out of this.
Thank you, Eddie. The, you know, another way I think about this often is, I mean, it is a fee, much like a service fee, much like for any of you who use ATMs, and that little thing comes up, this is going to cost you $3, do you want to pay this fee? It doesn't come up and say, this is a $3 tax, that you're now being taxed on being able to access your own money. So again, it truly is a form of a, a service fee. It's a fee as opposed to a tax. And again, I agree with what Eddie just said, and what I said at the very onset, is, since this is an opt-out program, you can opt out of this fee, but you cannot opt out of your federal, state, local taxes.
I'll give another one. Is this fee meant to reduce carbon-based energy usage or to raise the reserve funds for solar and wind projects?
It is intended for both. The fee is intended to incentivize conservation, and if everyone reduces their energy by 2 percent, they will experience no change in their net billing. However, so for the average household, that would mean going from 800 kilowatt hours per month down by 2 percent, down to 784 kilowatt hours per month, right? But then, on that existing 784 kilowatt hours per month, there would still be a fee charged of two mils per kilowatt hour. So it will levy funds off of the reduced usage to fund the build-out of these solar systems. It's intended for both, and we can actually have all this.
And I think this last question is a good one, too. If the fee is not a tax, then why does it have to go to the ballot at all?
Oh. Sopac does not act undemocratically, all right? That is the core value of our institution. Sopac has the authority to ink a contract today and do this today without asking a single voter what they prefer, but that's not how we work. So you will see on the ballot, as we said, it's an advisory ballot measure, and I've heard some people say, well, that means it doesn't have to pass, but I'm telling you Sopac's not going to do anything with it if it doesn't pass, so we are asking for voters what they would like to do here.
And I think that's at the core of the city council also, in making the decision in passing these ordinance and saying, we want to present this, we, we are interested in presenting this to, to the citizens so that they can vote on this on election day.
And I'll tell you, as one of the board members for Sopac, again, you know, Eddie's advisory board felt that this was the right way to go, but again, we too knew that Sopac is within its legal rights to just go ahead and, and could have levied a two-mill surcharge onto the current rates, which we didn't do. I mean, a lot of us see that on other bills that we get from, from wherever, you know, whether it's a credit card or something else, and Black on another good example, but, you know, that happens through other industries to where all of a sudden you're looking at your bill and going, oh, that service fee went up by X, well, I didn't have a say in this, but this does allow the citizens of Athens to have a say.
And I think we are officially at closing statements, so if there's any final remarks that are, kind of, too much to make, it will begin with Eddie and go down the line. Two minutes, I'd say.
Yeah, so just to, just to conclude things here, Sopac is really happy to put this, this policy forward to engage even deeper with the customers and citizens of the communities we serve. Nothing excites me more than seeing people care about these issues and ask provocative questions, and this is phenomenal. This issue tonight, though, accomplishes three objectives, right? It allows us to create an incentive that's missing in the market for the damages that come from our current energy consumption, and that actually, when we monetize that market, quite impact a million dollars a year, right? That's the first thing that it accomplishes, creating that incentive. The second thing, though, is it levies funds for the solution. It levies funds to help us build out solar panels that will reduce the amount of energy consumption that our city is taking from that grid with those emissions. The final thing it does is it allows us to create a solution for a customer preference we haven't been able to do. We haven't been able to get a source of local solar renewable energy certificates to create a more local solar aggregation product to serve the citizens of Athens. And we get to do all three of those with this policy, right? We get to create the incentive to conserve energy, levy funds to build out the solar panels, and transfer those recs back to the people who paid for it in the first place, all with one vote, right? That's, that's the value proposition here today. We also get to advance three benchmarks in the Energy Action Plan for the city's Sustainability Plan. This is the only institutionalized program right now that is on the table for, for citizens to accomplish those goals. So a lot can be done here with this program. Again, I can't make, I can't tell anyone how to vote, right? I can only tell you the facts, but the facts are, this absolutely has a net benefit for the community. So I hope you learn more, and thank everyone for, for coming out.
Again, I think Eddie pretty much captured it all. I think you may have noticed as well, at least from me, and I'm not going to speak for Chris, but we have, we're not up here as cheerleaders for this to say rush, run out and vote on this either. We've been fairly neutral and informative because this is an open forum to educate as to what can be done with this carbon fee. Again, to kind of echo what Eddie just said, is that this really helps us, the city and our community, to achieve some of our sustainability benchmarks. I think that we have been a leader in the state, and I think with this, it kind of brings us up to a different level to where we're a leader in the nation of showing that there is a different way to go about doing things and being, again, environmentally responsible, but also being better stewards, I believe, of city funds and taxpayer dollars with being able to have solar and cutting down our electric costs and reallocating those monies to other projects either within said facility or elsewhere. So, and I want to thank you all for being here. Again, I really want to thank the, the Cleveland voters for holding this open forum, and again, want to mention one last time, this, this informational document is, there's a wealth of knowledge in there for everyone, so I encourage you to pick one up in a while. So thank you for coming.
And I'll add with a thanks to the league and to all of you for asking the questions tonight. I've learned a lot just through the questions that have been posed, and I know for a while I'm going home to check my utility bill to see how many kilowatt hours I'm using per month, the challenge is on. So thank you all, and do exercise the right to vote on election day if not before. Thanks so much. Thank you very much.
You did a good job.
There are also carbon, I'm sorry, sweetest water science, the back of the road, so we can take one home, if you're interested.